Here.
Mr. Naidoo?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
President.
President Fox?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now I'm going to ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moving on, could you read the note regarding closed session and hearing comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes. A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that the council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV, Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. This meeting is also being streamed live through YouTube. To view this meeting via YouTube, please visit the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the bottom of the homepage. While this council meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place in to accommodate public input during this meeting through public notice dated June 4, 2020, which provided information for those wishing to participate during public comment periods at this council meeting. Public comment will be permitted at specified times as outlined in the agenda. Please refrain from commenting until solicited by the council president. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now on to minutes for approval. We have minutes for both the regular enclosed session of May 12 and May 26. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And a second? Is that a second?
Second from Greg.
Okay, thanks. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carried. So moving on, we're on to reports. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much, Council President. I first would like to thank the Summit Police Department and Nikki Griffiths in particular, and the Summit PBA Local 55 for organizing and volunteering at a two-weekend-long donation drive to benefit GRACE, the pantry, which GRACE is an acronym for Giving and Receiving Assistance for Community Essentials. Four van loads full of needed items were donated. I want to thank the Lusardi family of the Liberty Group for donating their van on both weekends to transport the donated items. A second Summit Police Officer was injured on Saturday night in an accident while in pursuit of a stolen vehicle taken from a driveway on Oak Ridge Avenue. The vehicle was unlocked with the key fob in it. People who recklessly leave keys in a car with it unlocked are drawing criminals into our neighborhoods, endangering their neighbors and our police officers. We implore you to please take a few extra minutes to lock your car each night. In addition, there are reports of packages being stolen from porches. To avoid them being taken, do not leave deliveries outside, especially overnight. Our community is being targeted by people who see easy opportunity for theft, and this has been on the rise throughout the state apparently in recent weeks. Please be mindful for yourselves and your neighbors. Lock your cars and bring in your packages. Last Tuesday, June 2, and on Thursday, June 4, two protest marches were held in Summit. The June 2 March was organized by young residents, San High School students, and included about 1,500 people who came together to affirm that Black Lives Matter, calling for an end to racial injustice and police brutality. I was proud to stand shoulder-to-shoulder with other elected officials, members of the faith community, and our police department as we addressed and then marched with the crowd. A second peaceful protest was held on June 4 that began in New Providence and looped through Summit. Another is planned for this Friday, as well as two others that are being organized through Fountain Baptist Church. I am thankful that our police department is working with organizers to ensure a safe route for them, and proud of our residents who are exercising their First Amendment rights and raising their voices in protest. This is a potentially a time that our country will take a different direction. So that would be my hope and my prayer, and that's it for tonight, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to Michael Rogers, the City Administrator, for his report. Michael?
Council President, good evening, everyone. Start off with the County of Union is milling and paving the entire length of Broad Street between Morris Avenue and Middle Avenue now through Monday, June 15, weather permitting. During parts of the milling and paving process, Broad Street will be closed and traffic will be diverted to Morris Avenue. Police officers will remain on site. Pathways for pedestrians and access for emergency vehicles will be established. Blays are expected, so please avoid the area if possible. City officials and the municipal transfer station will be closed on Friday, July 3. However, the transfer station will be open on Saturday, July 4 from 8:30 to 2:30 p.m. Staff will be will return to all city offices full-time on Monday, June 22. And good news, all city offices will be open to the public on Monday, July 6. Citizens doing business at City Hall and in any remote office will be required to wear a face covering and to maintain a safe physical distance from staff. And finally, today, the governor ended the state's stay-at-home order and issued guidance on an expanded outdoor and indoor limits on gatherings. Additionally, guidance has been provided on how to safely reopen public and private pools. We are in the process of reviewing it, and we'll make a decision about the Summit Family Aquatic Center very soon. And that's all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And I had a few other things. First of all, the downtown reopening. It has been a priority for me, my council colleagues, city staff, and the mayor to work closely with local business owners and Summit Downtown, Inc., to understand what local businesses need from our municipal government and what would be helpful to them to successfully reopen with the current New Jersey state restrictions in place. Recent Zoom meeting with representatives from more than 30 local businesses, as well as countless conversations with businesses. Business owners and SDI informed the development of six resolutions that we will be introducing this evening to support businesses in Summit as they reopen. Thank you to everyone who reached out with your ideas and feedback during the more than four weeks that we were working to put these plans together. And thank you to city staff and my council colleagues and the mayor, and to Nancy Adams of SDI for all their hard work and thinking and outreach on this. I appreciate hearing from all the businesses and the residents, and I just want to add that we love our local businesses and we want them to succeed. On mental health resources, the New Jersey Red Cross is providing resources to anyone who's lost a loved one due to COVID-19. They know that grieving is always difficult and recognize that there are additional challenges and needs during the pandemic. Visit redcross.org/vfac to access the Virtual Family Assistance Program and connect with their specially-trained volunteers in New Jersey. And finally, I was proud to participate in the protest march on June 2 that was organized by Summit High School students. The recent activism and support for the Black community in Summit is inspiring, and it says a lot about who we are as a city. I encourage residents to build on the momentum of these protests, to advocate for positive change, both locally and nationally. And I also encourage residents to stay engaged and to vote. Thank you so much. Now, moving on, we've got our police chief, Chief Andrew Bartalatti, who is going to speak to us about police policy. So I'll turn it over to you, Chief.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Mayor Rades, Council President Fox, members of common council, city staff and citizens of Summit. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and in this moment in history to speak to you about Summit Police Department. The death of George Floyd at the hands of a police officer who took an oath to protect the community is tragic. As a law enforcement officer and chief of police, I find it equally tragic and deplorable that others sworn to protect and serve stood idly by and did not intervene. They are equally responsible. These actions are contrary to the training and manner in which police services are provided by members of the Summit Police Department, and that is the message that I want to share. Seeing so many young members of our community come together with raised voices was inspiring. At the Tuesday, June 2 and Thursday, June 4 protest marches, 31 and 29 officers were deployed respectively. Officers engaged in traffic safety protocols wearing reflective vests over regular uniforms. I reminded them that protesters would be upset and that we need to react only if a dangerous situation was a voler. I asked them to let their character guide them, as we always do. In most protest situations, we do not take a side. That is how we are trained to handle these situations. On this one, we are on the same side as the protesters. Black Lives Matter and police misconduct toward people of color must end. It has been eight days since my swearing-in as your chief of police, and looking back over those eight days and the two months prior as officer in charge, they have been filled with highs and lows. Challenging moments where we needed to pull together to get the job done, as well as proud moments where the character of our officers avoided emotionally charged situations from escalating, and witnessing the kindness and generosity of this wonderful community carried us all through. Tonight, I'm reporting on the policy and sharing departmental statistics. It will be as transparent as possible with this information, and I hope that following my presentation, you will be as confident as I am that the Summit Police Department is committed to being an ally for all citizens, especially our Black citizens, and a vital safety resource for the entire community. The Summit Police Department follows the New Jersey Attorney General's policy on police use of force. This policy outlines guidelines as to how much force may be applied in a given situation. It is based on the standard of a continuum where law enforcement is guided by the principle that the degree of force employed in any situation should be reasonably necessary. This policy specifically prohibits the use of chokeholds, neck restraints, or similar tactics, except in the very limited situations in which deadly force is necessary to address an imminent threat to life. Additionally, this policy also reinforces the responsibility of law enforcement officers to take action to prevent or stop the illegal inappropriate use of force by other officers. I would like to point out that the New Jersey Attorney General's policy on use of force is more restrictive than national standards in that it incorporates the use of force policy changes that are identified in the Eight Can't Wait Policy Reform Campaign. A link to the current policy is on our police page on the city website. The statistics I have available to share are from 2016 to the present day on use of force. In order to interpret the data accurately, Summit Police reporting practice needs to be understood. We report every instance where contact with an actor is made, inclusive of minor scrapes, abrasions, or complaint of pain. It is required reporting for our department, but not for all departments. Since 2016, officers in the Summit Police Department have used force in 29 occasions. The incident types involved 12 incidents of crimes in progress, 10 involving emotionally disturbed individuals, four involving alcohol or substance-related incidents, two involving domestic violence assaults, and one involving a fight in progress. The demographics include 22 white actors, of which two were female, four Hispanic actors, and three African-American actors. The subject actions. In 18 of 29 incidents involved the subject resisting the officer's control only. 11 of the 29 incidents involved the subject resisting the officer's control and physically threatening or attacking the officer. The level of force that was utilized. In 21 of the 29 incidents involved the lowest amount of force of a compliance hold only. In six of the 29 cases, a compliance hold was utilized, and the officer had to escalate to the next level of force using hands or fists to subdue the subject. In one of the 29 cases, the actor escalated the attack to the next level where a compliance hold, hands or fists, or kicks or feet were used to subdue the subject. In one of the 29 cases, the officer had to use OC spray to the face to subdue the subject. Fifteen of the 29 actors were arrested. Fourteen were transported to the hospital for either alcohol or mental health treatment. Zero subjects were killed. Zero subjects sustained serious bodily injury. Zero subjects required medical treatment or hospitalization as a result of the force being utilized, and one officer received medical treatment for injuries that were sustained. From 2015 to present, there were two complaints for excessive use of force. In 2018, a third-party complainant reported excessive force by an officer, specifically the use of a raised arm motion and verbal commands. The officer was exonerated of any wrongdoing after the investigation revealed that the officer was giving verbal commands to separate two parties that were engaged in a verbal altercation, and the complainant indicated that he misinterpreted what he had seen. In 2019, three officers with the subject of an Internal Affairs review of excessive force being reported by a third party. The investigation exonerated all three officers of wrongdoing after it was revealed that the officers were misidentified as hospital security officers. When considering traffic stops, it is not entirely accurate to make comparisons based on population statistics for the city of Summit, as enforcement includes non-resident traffic stops. In 2019, the Summit Police Department conducted 8,723 motor vehicle stops. The demographics of the drivers were as follows. In 5,405 of those stops, the driver was white but non-Hispanic. In 1,372 stops, the driver was Black. In 1,201 stops, the driver was Hispanic. In 561 stops, the driver was Asian or Pacific Islander. And in 184 stops, the driver was classified as Other. Although the recording of driver demographics is not mandated, the Summit Police Department has been collecting this data for several years as a means of an early warning system to identify racial inequality in motor vehicle stops. To ensure this information is collected for each encounter, the computer-aided dispatch system in use by our agency makes this information a requirement before the incident is able to be completed. Officers within the Summit Police Department receive training that is above the minimum mandates by the state and includes amongst others bias-based profiling, use of force, substance abuse, and response to persons with mental illness. Although there is no statewide mandate, in the fall of 2018, the Summit Police Department acquired and mandated the use of body-worn cameras for all uniform personnel to increase transparency and accountability of our officers. Additionally, a companion mandate was put in place for the use of in-car video cameras for all of our marked police vehicles. Our Internal Affairs Unit has grown over the years from responding to and investigating allegations of officer misconduct and administrative policy violations, to taking on a role of proactive oversight designed to detect patterns and trends in police conduct before that conduct escalates. Under the guidance of the Internal Affairs Unit, supervisory and commanding officers conduct daily reviews of calls for service, motor vehicle stops, officer reports, use of force incidents, body camera footage, and physical observation of officer encounters with the public. Through this review, in conjunction with other factors, the Internal Affairs Unit evaluates each officer across a set of performance indicators to objectively measure potential escalating harmful behavior by the officer. The Summit Police Department Internal Affairs Policy adopts the guidelines established by the Attorney General for the state of New Jersey. Inclusive in those guidelines is the regular reporting of all internal affairs allegations and complaints and investigations to the Union County Prosecutor's Office. Additionally, the guidelines require us to report and forward all criminal allegations against a Summit Police Officer to the prosecutor's office for an independent investigation. Only those cases that are considered administrative complaints or violations are investigated by the department's Internal Affairs Unit. As the new chief of police, one of my priorities is to conduct a comprehensive review of the Summit Police Department policies and procedures to align our agency with best practice in law enforcement. This process is a critical step in establishing expectations for professional, ethical, and accountable policing within our community. Another focus of my new administration is to pursue certification as an accredited law enforcement agency. Accreditation is a self-initiated voluntary process and is based on standards which are reflective of best practice in law enforcement. The accreditation process provides for a non-biased, independent assessment of the department as measured against acceptable standards in policing. Through this comparison, accreditation improves public safety services by either validating current policies and practices or mandating and facilitating the change of non-compliant areas. Transformation of a police organization, their role, and their relationship with a community requires an agency as a whole and its leadership to not only understand but embrace the necessary changes in areas such as organizational culture, accountability and transparency, discriminatory police encounters, use of force, and enhanced training on areas such as implicit bias, conflict resolution, cultural awareness, and bias-based profiling. Another area being reviewed is the Regional Dispatch Center that serves the city of Summit. Many residents and callers are still unaware that the police dispatcher they are communicating with is not an employee of the police department or the city. Over the years, this has generated some discussion as to the manner in which information is collected from the caller and transmitted to the responding officers. Under the direction of the new executive director of the center, we are collaborating with them on the introduction of a quality assurance and training program to ensure their organization is meeting best practice and supporting the delivery of police service in our community. There is a groundswell of support for the police policy change in action. While many of our procedures exceed the minimum national standards, we recognize there is always a need to improve the system in which we operate. The Summit Police Department is committed to be an ally for Black and Brown citizens and to implement vital safety resources for them. I thank you for your time and your attention this evening.
Thank you, Chief, for that presentation. I'm going to open it up to members of council who might have questions. Does anyone have questions? Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank Chief Bartalatti for that presentation. As many of you know, I have a background in law enforcement and as a criminal prosecutor, I have worked with many police departments, mainly in New Hampshire and Virginia, and now in New Jersey. And this was an issue that was on the forefront of my mind long before these incidents. I've also been involved with the Anti-Racism Committee here in New Jersey and some of the Black Lives Matters movements long before this. And this was an issue that I was very concerned with and met with Chief Weck on a number of occasions to talk about the policies and how our police department deals with all the citizens in Summit. And I can say that our department goes well beyond what most departments do, and Chief Weck and now Chief Bartalatti have always been extremely responsive to any of the concerns I've expressed and the concerns expressed by other people that I've witnessed. I want to thank you for such a transparent presentation and for being so willing to talk about this issue and express publicly your support for this movement and for improving the department and making sure that all of our residents feel safe and protected in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. As the newest addition to the Safety Committee, Chief Bartalatti has come into this position with just an unusual amount of adversity, and I want to applaud his can-do efforts and approach and let him know that the community has spoken up very loud in Summit with the two marches, and I know that we have much confidence in his ability to go the extra mile to evolve the way this country is now evolving on the way that Black and Brown citizens are policed in this country, and that we are able to make sure our policies and procedures and our practices reflect those values. Having grown up in Summit and having experienced things that I can tell you other members on this council have not experienced, I look forward to working with you, Chief Bartalatti, to make sure that all citizens' values are respected, and with my dad having been a police officer, that we remain vigilant about our police officers as well being safe. So I just want to, like I said, show a vote of confidence that we can tackle this issue locally in the way that it needs to be done.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you very much, Council President. I echo the comments of my colleagues, Little and Hairston, to you, Chief, with regards to thank you for your comprehensive presentation, as well as for your role in the marches, specifically speaking at the first march. It was very important, I think, as a statement of the values of this community and show the unity of this community towards Black Lives Matter that you were there, and so I want to commend you for that. But also, I would ask that as you go ahead and review these policies with the Safety Committee, that at some point in time that we have another presentation such as this to know the progress and the changes that will be implemented, and so this way that the community is informed not only of the review that was taking place, but what the results of that review was and what the impact of changes that will occur. Thank you very much.
Chief Bartalatti, I had a question for you as well. I believe you said that the policies are on the Summit Police Department's website. Is that correct?
Excuse me. The department's use of force policy references that of the guidelines of the Attorney General, and that is up on the website page for the police department.
So as policies are reviewed, will those change, any changes that are made also be placed on the website?
With specific to use of force policy, the Attorney General has made an announcement that they will be reviewing that policy as it is 20 years old at this point in time, and any changes that come to that policy inadvertently will trickle down to us as we follow that guideline specifically as our own policy. So yes, to answer your question, yes, as that policy is updated, that link takes you right to the Attorney General's guideline.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of council? Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. I also want to thank you, Chief. On June 1, seems like it was a year ago, but it's not, and a lot is happening quickly. I appreciate your presentation tonight and its transparency. There's some hard work ahead, as you knew when we first talked months ago about the policies and the reviews, and some of these policies are mundane. They're having to do with administrative activity, but the other ones are harder, and the hard part is not really reviewing the policy and making the change, but then it's training the officers. So I know you're up to the task, and I'm glad that all of us are discussing this, and there's so much community conversation. Hopefully, things will come out of this. I'm tired of all this that's been going on for decades, and nothing really seems to change. So as I said before, my hope and prayer is that this is an inflection point that really does drive change. So thank you very much for your leadership.
Any other questions from members of council? Okay, so I'm going to now see if there are any questions from members of the public.
I do not see any raised hands, Council President, nor do I see any emails.
Okay. All right. So I think we will wrap this up then. Thank you so much, Chief Bartalatti, for coming tonight, and I know you spent a lot of time putting together this presentation to go over this all with us, and I think that I echo the comments from all of the council members, and I agree with Councilmember Naidoo that this would be a helpful thing to do on a periodic basis as you continue your review for us to have these presentations for both us and the public to hear what's going on. So thank you again for your work on this.
Thank you, Council President.
Okay. So now, moving on, we're ready for our budget hearing, so I'll turn it over to Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. I spoke at length at the last council meeting about the goals that were established alongside this budget and the way that the mayor, council, and staff members have been pursuing objectives related to those goals. I do want to take the opportunity now to publicly thank all of the people who were involved in the creation of this budget and the amendments. Every department head plays a role, and every department head has been constantly reevaluating their needs while keeping costs in check. City Administrator Michael Rogers, Chief Financial Officer Tammy Baldwin are both the MVPs, and I want the people of Summit to know and understand that we continue to be in such a strong financial position because of their extremely good work. a strong financial position because of their extremely good work. So I am also grateful for the amazing Finance Committee. Mayor Radies, Council President Fox, and Councilman Bowman are highly intelligent, measured, creative, and balanced in their approach. It has been a pleasure to work with that group throughout this process. As I believe I mentioned at the last meeting, the budget process is painstakingly detailed in the best of times. This process was essentially done twice this year. Again, thank this incredible team of people. And I now move to open the hearing for the 2020 Municipal Operating Budget as amended on May 26, 2020.
Second.
Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call vote on that?
No, this is the hearing portion, Madam President. When we get to the resolution, then we'll have a vote.
Right, okay. So I guess my next question is, does any member of council have any comments on the budget as amended? All right, you'll have another shot at the end, so I'm going to turn it over to the public as this is a public hearing. So do we have any, it looks like we have a raised hand.
Council President, you could open it up. I just want to preface it by saying that Ms. Kelly submitted some emails. Some, maybe one or two questions have to do with the budget. So at this point, I believe she's prepared to speak on the budget.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Ms. Kelly.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you so much, Council President. My name is Eileen Kelly. I live at 47 Woodland Avenue. A good evening to everyone. My first question about the budget, could the Finance Committee, as we are six months into the year, could you provide some insight into how our actual operational costs are tracking against this latest view? And what, if any, favorable or unfavorable variance we have to the plan? Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Vartan, would you like to take that one?
Sure. So I'll give the very high level, and then I'll pass it to Michael or Tammy for any details that I may have missed. So we did, because it is essentially halfway through the year, we reviewed, as we usually do, the monthly report of revenues versus expenditures. On the expenditure side of the ledger, we are tracking extremely well toward this budget as it's been planned, but also tracking well and spending less than we were at this point last year. So I think that that's a testament to the way that Michael and Tammy and the rest of the department heads have been responsible stewards of their resources. I don't want to get into any of the specific numbers because we could spend all night. But Michael or Tammy, anything else specifically that jumps out at you that you want to mention?
Councilman, no. I think you've accurately depicted where we are expenditure-wise. We know that there's some lower tracking on the revenue side, but I think specifically about the expenditures thus far this year, vis a vis 2019, we are tracking lower versus what we are actually budgeting for, we are tracking lower as well. So I think we're in really good shape on the expenditure side midway through 2020.
Okay, are there any other questions?
That was it. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions from the public, Madam Clerk?
Give me a moment, Council President. Nothing on the budget for this.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else on council or the mayor have any comments before we close the budget hearing then? Okay, Councilmember Naiden.
I just got it in the last minute. I thought maybe it would be helpful for the public to hear a little bit more about what categories are we seeing expenditures lower at.
I don't have the specifics in front of me, Councilman. I just know we had this discussion yesterday, and perhaps Tammy, if she has something in front of her. But my recollection is that for most, if not all, of the categories, salary and wage and other expenses, we are tracking lower percentage-wise than we were last year, which says something because in some areas, they're greater than last year as far as what we're budgeting for. So and the other thing, just for the benefit of the public, even what we've spent thus far this year, there's a lot that we are seeking reimbursement for through the CARES Act as well as through FEMA. So we expect, and I don't have the amount, I know Tammy's working on compiling all the numbers from each department, but it's pretty substantial what we are seeking reimbursement for. So I think on the expenditure side, I'm truly not concerned about how we will wind up at the end of this year, barring any crazy second half to 2020. And hopefully, it's a little bit calmer than it was the first half. So I think as far as the expenditure side, we're in really good shape. Revenues, I think we've made the necessary adjustments to minimize what we saw as potential exposure in realization of revenues that we were initially projecting. So I think we're, I think that there's really no specific line item, Councilman, that I'm...
Can I just follow up, Michael, with your reference to the CARES Act? Again, to help the public understand how some of this process works, do we have a date certain by which we have to submit a reimbursement? How does it work? Just let's just help the public understand what we mean by when we say we're going to submit things for reimbursement under the CARES Act.
Right. Tammy, do you want to speak to, because I know Tammy's been working more closely with the county, so would you like to...
Yes, thank you, through you, Council President. We are working to put together a package. The timeline is from March 1st all the way through December 31st of 2020. So our first submission in should be in this week, as well as a submission into FEMA. Once it's determined if and what expenses are eligible through the County CARES Act or through FEMA, it won't be duplicated, and we'll be getting feedback. We'll be able to continue, if there continue to be expenditures going throughout the year. Right now, we're submitting expenses through May 31st. If there are COVID-related expenses that come up throughout the year in terms of keeping the public health safety or safety measures for the building or whatever it may be, we will have the opportunity to continue apply for reimbursement until the time period ends, which will be, as they say right now, on both fronts for December 31st.
Thank you very much.
Very quickly, to answer your other question, Councilman Naiden, the only, the report in front of me, the only expense that is up, and it's up from about 81% to 83% this year, is our debt service. And that's strictly because of the structure of the timing of the payment. But otherwise, we're tracking below where we were at this time last year in every category.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilman Bowman.
Can I add one thing? We have some good news as well, as we actually are ahead of budget on one of our revenue streams. As we went over in the meeting yesterday, is our cell tower revenue is up, I believe, 132% of year-to-date budget. So kudos to us. I guess it's more of a transaction thing, but it's always nice to have a plus on revenue.
Thank you, Councilman Bowman. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, so with that, I think we can declare this budget hearing closed. Moving on to public comments, this is for items not on the agenda. Do we have, Madam Clerk, do we have any comments?
Yes, Council President. We have two emails from Allison, I hope I'm saying this correctly, Chifo. If I may proceed to read her first email. She says towns across the state, our state, have been preparing for months for the reopening of restaurants, which would include outdoor dining. Do you think I should defer this to the resolutions later on?
The answer, well, I think so, but maybe, do you want to tell us what the question is? It sounds like the...
I'll finish. Her question is, how much preparation time did our council give to our downtown business owners to prepare for a plan for additional outdoor seating and extra tables? And also, why is the sidewalk sale resolution for non-essential retail only being discussed at this meeting? Did the governor's executive order specifically ban outdoor sidewalk sales? So I think we could...
I think we could defer that to when we discuss the resolutions as part of the Capitol projects.
I agree. Ms. Chifo also has a second email regarding our Fourth of July festivities. Can the council please confirm whether or not social distancing or financial issues were the reasons that the July 4th fireworks were canceled? A press release stated social distancing is the concern, but Councilman Vartan mentioned on Facebook it was a financial decision. Was any input from residents taken into consideration regarding this cancellation? If financial reasons are the issue, can the council please confirm which of the major sponsors from last year, including investors and Nokia Bell Labs, backed out? If social distancing was an issue, why are we unable to use creative ideas such as spraying family circles on the field that are six feet apart and can safely let our community come together?
So my understanding is that the Office of Emergency Management made a determination that it was not, based on the guidelines from the governor at that point, that there was not, there was not a way that we could do this safely and manage crowds, given the social distancing guidelines in place. I will allow Chief Evers to add anything he wants on that topic, but I would also add that I have, we have reached out to a number of neighboring communities. New Providence has canceled their fireworks. Westwood doesn't do Fourth of July fireworks, but they did cancel their 300th anniversary fireworks, which were supposed to be at the end of June. Chatham is not doing fireworks. So basically, what we are learning is that all of the communities have come to the same conclusion, which is that there's no way to do this safely. So I'll turn it over to Chief Evers to elaborate anything that I've missed since I wasn't at the OEM.
Sure, thank you, Council President. Yeah, you're correct. It was this, our OEM group met with all the agencies in town to discuss about two months ago, the possibility of having fireworks. And logistically, at that time, a lot of unknowns, and it takes a lot of time to set up. I'm sure Mark can speak a little bit about that as well. But just for safety reasons, trying to manage that many people in that kind of venue is really difficult to safely guarantee that the public's going to be safe. So the decision was not to have the fireworks. And also, the timeframe to make a decision, the planning was also an issue as well. So just to face it to the public, to try to manage that many people, it would just be very difficult on a service to have a safe event. So for that reason, we couldn't guarantee the safety, so we decided, the group, not to have the fireworks.
Okay, thank you. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. As a member of the Office of Emergency Management team, I was at those meetings. And yes, it was definitely a social distancing and a safety concern, which is why we canceled the event. Had nothing to do with whether we'd raise them on, no donors or supporters backed out. So that's nothing that we should be concerned about. And also, with today, with the governor saying that you could have outdoor gatherings of up to 500 people as of July 3rd, that still doesn't help us because we have well over 500 people that come to the fireworks. So and to try to draw circles six feet apart of Memorial Field, it still wouldn't accommodate all the people that would want to come. So we just felt it was not, logistically and safely, it was not the right decision to make. And then you had to make a decision, you know, you couldn't wait till the day before because there's so much planning that goes into this event. So that's why it was done. Do you have anything you want to add, Mark? I think you need to unmute.
Yeah.
Got it. No, I echo both the chiefs and your comments as well, Mayor. You know, with social gathering, that's the biggest issue. And then, like you said, there's a lot of planning that goes into it. And at the time, we had to make a decision whether we were going to do it or not. And we, as a group, decided that we just, we weren't going to be able to do it this year.
My understanding though is that we are looking at alternative virtual or other alternatives that can be done safely. Is that correct, Mark?
That's correct, Council President.
Okay, so stay tuned for what those...
And we discussed at OEM today, Marjorie, that we were to be having a meeting to discuss specifically the Fourth of July, what maybe we could do virtually or whatever. And there'd be a Zoom meeting invitation sent out for that, and I asked that you be part of that meeting.
Terrific. I look forward to hearing all the great ideas that people will come up with. I'm sure there'll be something that'll be fun. So I think that addresses that question. Were there other questions, Madam Clerk?
I see a raised hand from Ms. Kelly.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I have two questions that are pertinent to items not found on the agenda. Would you like me to ask one at a time?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. The first question, how does communication regarding resources and updates for COVID-19 get delivered to small business owners who are minority-owned and may have limitations in terms of email or online access?
Susan, did you have, looks like you had your hand up? Okay.
So I will speak for our communications person, our communications officer, Amy Cairns, who has done an amazing job of staying on top of all of the communications having to do with COVID-19, having partnered with SDI, the Summit Downtown, Inc., our Summit Chamber of Commerce, has been relentless at reaching out and making sure all small businesses, not just in the downtown area, but throughout Summit, have been encouraged to apply and get help. And the mayor can probably address this better. The committee that was formed was very intentional about making sure that there was outreach that was done. And I know she reported at last council meeting how funds were distributed. So there has been a concerted effort on the part of this council and our partners, the chambers and the SDI.
Yeah, thank you, Eileen, for that question. So the communications office in the city puts out all the information, and then Amy Cairns communicates with the head of the SDI to get information out. Now, historically, SDI only represents the people in the downtown because there's a tax assessment that they pay, and they become part of the SID, which is the Summit, the Special Improvement District. Because of this crisis with the COVID pandemic, the SDI board agreed to have all businesses in town, not just in the Summit, in the downtown, be apprised of what help could be given. And as you'll hear tonight, the resolutions that we're talking about, the council is going to talk about and vote upon, apply to businesses all throughout town. That said, so let me back up. A concerted effort was made to reach all the businesses in town, whether they were in the downtown or not. That said, nothing's perfect. And it is possible that a business was not aware of the Sustained Summit Fund. I think that that's something we can think and talk about. I know that you have been focused on this, and I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish. So we'll try to see what we can do. But that's, the process is, everything goes out from the city and then sent to SDI. And we rely upon them, to a certain degree, to give us the information about the other businesses in town. And if one or two fell through the cracks, then we're going to address that.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And just a quick comment, if I may add, I'm obviously speaking in reference to the limitations that some of our minority-owned businesses, whether English is their second language or online access is not available, they face their own set of challenges. I do want to say thank you again. I do want to say thank you again for the tremendous effort that has gone out and all the coordination. I know many businesses have benefited. But yes, I was speaking specifically to a specific case. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Naidoo.
Well, actually, the last point that Ms. Kelly referenced is the one I wanted to ask her about because I think it's important not just- let me just step back. We always have an issue about how we communicate, in the sense that we could send out letters, we could send out emails. We could, right now, we can't go door-to-door or meet people at the door. We always have an issue, and we've discussed this at council and other issues, such as last year when we were dealing with Plastics. How do we go ahead and make sure that people are informed, whether it's businesses or residents? Because there's limitations in whichever mannerisms of communications. The COVID issue, of course, made it so that you can't go walking door-to-door and meeting folks. So that automatically took it away. And because of the urgency of trying to address some of these things, such as getting funds to businesses, you wanted to do it as quickly as possible, and you didn't want to send mail because businesses may not even be opening their mail. They may not be getting the mail, those addresses. So you sent by email. So there's inherently some limitations because of the reality that we live in. But Ms. Kelly seems to be referencing some specific situation. And I'd like to ask her frankly, you know, to describe a little bit more what she knows to help us understand what the situation was.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I was referencing a business owner, not in the downtown district, whose second language is English. And again, access to emails, I would say general access online is a bit limited. And so he missed not just the first round of applying to the Sustained Fund grant, but the second as well. And so in trying to assist him, as someone who speaks fluent Spanish, and trying to reach out to a number of, you know, business owners that might need extra help during this time, I was looking to inquire how he could, you know, be guaranteed or at least find a process for the very important communications that come out of the city.
Thank you. I appreciate you providing us the background. But as I said, I think one of the other things that when we discussed this in previous issues with council is, of course, the importance of businesses that have an investment here in town to get involved in different mechanisms. And this time, as the mayor said, SDI did the, not just for the folks that they get paid to do work for, which is the downtown businesses, but reaching out. But if people know, and this is a community, right? If people hear of these incidences, then they should contact us and tell us as quickly as possible of what they know or if they know of people who are having an issue. Because there's no way seven, eight, nine of us here on council and the mayor can possibly, of a city of 22,000, know what's going on with everyone and what their issues are. And so to the extent that people are aware of issues, it's really, you know, we would appreciate you coming and telling us, okay, this is an issue here. Let's see what we can do. Sometimes we can do things about it, and sometimes we won't be able to do things about it. But so I appreciate you telling us about this. But yeah, it's a limitation under the reality that we live in.
Mayor Riedt.
Yes, so Councilman Naidoo, Ms. Kelly did reach out just in the last day or so to me and to Nancy Adams, and we're working on trying to figure this out. So she did what you had suggested that she should do. And I'm not a member of the committee that is dispensing these funds, so I can't make any decisions about this. So we reached out to the committee, and we're trying to figure this out.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Yeah. I would urge all members of the public, if they know of a business owner that perhaps is not receiving emails, is not, you know, is not someone who's digitally connected, that you notify those business owners. You know, we have all tried in our daily lives to let business owners know what's going on, but this is a challenge. We don't have a print newspaper anymore. A lot of our communications, when we do need to communicate with businesses traditionally, you know, we have gone, when we started the Skip the Straw campaign, there were efforts door-to-door, and same with the Plastics campaign. And, you know, in this environment, we're not able to go door-to-door to businesses, nor are all the business owners present at their places of business if we were to even do such a thing. So it's an added challenge. And, you know, I think this is a time where we need to rely on members of the community to step in and help us fill that gap. So thank you for raising this.
I also want to speak up again, Council President, if I may-
Yes, go ahead.
-to share how, in safety and health, this was a matter on our agenda to make sure we are reaching out to all individuals. And that is where I want to lift up the mayor's forum on diversity, which has a great network with minority members in the community. And that has been a personal opportunity for people to share because SDI and Nancy were really reaching out. The foundation, Summit Foundation, was reaching out. And so let us not forget about our institutions in town who have those networks in the minority communities, great resources.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrison. Councilmember Little.
Thank you. I also just want to reiterate something that Mayor Riedt and other members of council and Amy Cairns definitely has said many times, but it's always worth repeating, is that on the city website, you can sign up for the email alerts. And any business owner and resident of the city of Summit, I would really highly recommend that you go on the website. There's a way to get email alerts for different topics that are of interest to you. And, you know, sign up for them, and then you will not miss out on important information. There's only so much we can do and that it's possible to do to reach all the residents of Summit. But we can certainly spread the word about that so that people can stay informed.
And also, at the top right-hand corner of the website, on the homepage, there's a little button where you click on, and it's translate the entire website into a different language. So there's no reason why people who, and I think it's something like 30-some different languages that the website's translated into. So click on that thing where it says "language," and boom, you can get the information you need. And you can sign up. Sign up for notification is the single best way to get information about what's going on in town.
Okay, so the next question, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Of course, if I can be of any continued help, let me know. Thank you very much. The second question is for the Safety Committee. Has the city invested in any cameras or tracking software for monitoring stolen motor vehicle activity over the last few years? If so, has it been effective in mitigating car theft in Summit? Thank you very much.
I think the most useful thing to mitigate car theft in Summit would be residents taking their key fobs out of their cars and locking their cars. But I'll turn it over to the Safety Committee to elaborate.
So thank you, Council President. I am very glad that Aaron Schreger is here to speak, and Chief Bartolati can speak to this very issue on what kind of preventative and follow-up efforts have been taken on the city's part. There's been many. Chief, would you want to go first, or should we let Aaron take that?
I'll take that, Councilwoman. Thank you. Through Council President, Ms. Kelly, to answer your question, the city did purchase, through Capitol Project, automatic license plate readers that are on fixed posts throughout the city. That system was intended to go live just as COVID health crisis hit earlier in March. That project was put on hold due to travel restrictions that were put in place by the vendor. But we are on schedule to have that vendor come out. I believe it's the 22nd of this month, if not the 22nd a day that week. They will be coming out to finalize that installation and turn that system on live. Other than that particular system, we do not have any other cameras that track stolen vehicles that are in use by us today.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Little.
Chief, I know, I think I know the answer to this question, but can you just, how many of the recent car thefts involved cars where the key fob was inside and the car was unlocked?
In recent car thefts, all the keys were, I'm sorry, all the vehicles were unlocked and the keys were inside.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on. Are there any other questions from members of, oh, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you. Chief, can you just elaborate for a second on traffic cameras? Are those allowed in the state?
The city does not have any traffic cameras. If you're referring to the red light cameras, there was some controversy over that in years past, and those are no longer in play within the state.
Thank you.
Councilmember Naidoo.
Thank you. I just want to address broadly this issue about the car thefts and tie it actually to the budget. And here's the rationale, because obviously, some people are still not getting the message. And I know that over my years on council, now this is the fifth year, multiple years, different times, the mayor has said it, Chief Weck, when he was chief, said it, the council presidents or council members of safety have said, you know, residents need to take responsibility. This is very simple personal responsibility. Fact of the matter is, we almost had a tragedy again, second time in a couple of weeks where a police officer is in an accident because people are failing to take personal responsibility. And personally, I will say, I find this unacceptable, just completely unacceptable. I do not understand it. I do not understand the rationale for people leaving their fobs and their cars unlocked. It doesn't make sense to me. Maybe because I grew up in New York City, and it was normal that you lock doors and you lock cars. You just didn't see, and that just seemed normal to me. So this I don't understand as a behavior. But here's, so if you don't care that, you know, that people are going to possibly get injured, but maybe you care about your own finances. Just think about it. The time that is spent for an officer to be on the injured list means that you're paying your taxes towards a person who's not going to be working, right? Or the expenses that go in other stuff associated with increasing safety. All those measures cost you tax dollars. So you can't say at the same time, reduce my tax dollars, reduce, don't make me tax me, and yet don't take personal responsibility. We're all adults here. People who have driver's licenses and own cars presumably are adult enough to do those things, and they should take personal responsibility. That's my-
All right. Any other comments? It's a lively bunch tonight. All right, so we're going to move on. Any other public comments, Madam Clerk? I think you're muted.
Yeah, that wasn't working for a second. Sorry. No other public comments, Madam President.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public comment period. And now we will move on to ordinances for introduction. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This-
May I interrupt? Madam President, may I read the title of the ordinance?
Correct. Okay.
Thank you. Bond ordinance providing for the local unit's allocable share of flood mitigation facilities project of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties by and in the city of Summit in the county of Union, state of New Jersey. The local unit appropriating $2,375,000 therefor and authorizing issuance of $2,375,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Vartan, would you like to do the introduction now?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'm ready. This is a bond ordinance in the amount of $2,375,000 to finance the cost of Summit's portion of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties flood mitigation facilities project. This money will be borrowed from the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, and FEMA has pledged to reimburse municipalities 90% of the cost during the course of the project. The timing of doing this sort of a project may seem odd, but this is a federal project that will happen in 10 or so phases. And the cost in total will be close to $100 million for all of the municipalities that are involved in the joint meeting. This project is extremely important for the continuing maintenance of the flood mitigation. So we will go into the details, and we'll have a hearing about it on the next council meeting, which is June 23, 2020. I move to introduce this ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Did you want to open up to comment to the council or not necessarily?
It's an introduction, correct?
Yeah. Okay, we'll just go ahead with the vote. Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Harrison.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries, and we'll have the hearing on June 23. So moving on, we have two resolutions from Finance. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution sets forth the summary of 2020 revenues and appropriations for the 2020 municipal operating budget, 2020 sewer utility operating budget, and 2020 parking utility operating budgets, as they were amended on May 26, 2020. Put simply, this resolution officially adopts the budget. I want to stress a final time to the people of Summit that you should be very pleased with both the process and the product. And though this is the final vote, I want to also assure members of the public again that this is not the end of this conversation, not even close. Our revenues and expenditures will continue to be monitored daily, and adjustments will continue to be made. Indeed, we continue to get more guidance from the governor's office every day. And every day, the financial implications of those decisions are evaluated and considered carefully. Now, at long last, I adopt, I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Harrison.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye. So the motion carries, and we now have a budget at long last. Good work, everyone. So moving on to Finance, number two, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This one's much more boring. This resolution cancels outstanding checks as per a request from the municipal court. This is a routine bookkeeping measure, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public?
No, Madam President.
Okay, all right. Oh, I forgot to ask at the beginning of the Finance, but that's okay. So we're going to, so then I guess, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Post? Okay, motion carries. So we're on to Capitol Projects with Councilmember Little, and we have 12 resolutions. So go to it, Councilmember Little. Wait, let's make sure we, I think we are going to take the comments in advance. Is that correct, Madam Clerk, for the whole segment?
Yes, the outdoor dining one from Ms. Chiefo should be read at this point, I guess.
Okay, and are there any other-
There will be that question at least.
Okay.
Shall I read that now or wait till we get to that particular one? It's pretty lengthy.
We can do it, since it's not an issue of letting someone in, let's get, wait till we get to that. So Councilmember Little, go ahead. I think you're muted.
This is so hard to remember all the things that you need to do. But thank you, Council President. Finance, Capitol Projects Resolution Number One is to award the bid for the Huntley Road Area Improvement Project in the amount of $516,510. And this is for the Huntley Road Improvement Project, which includes Clark Street, Caldwell Avenue, Huntley Road, Willow Road, Eaton Court. And the submitted low bidder is SNL Contractors. So this will include repair of curbs, upgrade of drainage structures, repair of ADA ramps, and milling and paving of several streets, as I discussed. This has funding, but we have also requested funding for the project via the Union County Infrastructure Grant. We are currently awaiting to see if we've received any funding from that. I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you for doing it. This road needs the work, that's for sure. I guess my only question is, is it scheduled to be done this summer? Or are we looking at later on? Just a little FYI, please.
I believe Aaron Schreger's on the call. Maybe he could answer the question about the timing.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. When we award it right now, SNL does have a workload, but we intend to get them started as soon as they can. So, you know, assume with the contract going back and forth, maybe six to eight weeks they'll start. So that'll put them kind of in the dead of summer, and probably a six-to-eight week timeline, so three months total.
Okay, any other comments from members of council? And any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So moving on to Capital Projects, number two.
Thank you, Council President. With your permission, I'm going to bundle the next five resolutions, which all involve NJDOT grants.
Go ahead, council.
Thank you. So Resolution Number Two is for a grant application from NJDOT for pedestrian access to River Road Public Transit Project, and this would involve sidewalks on the north side of River Road. Currently, there is a sidewalk, but it ends, and then there's not sidewalk access in that area. There are a number of businesses, as well as nearby schools, including Washington School and Orchard Prep. So we will be applying for a grant for that project. Cap Projects Number Three involves a grant application under the Bike Ways Grant Project, and that would be for improvements to the first phase of the Summit Park Line Project, including sidewalk access along Morse Avenue to that first phase of the Park Line Project. Capital Projects Number Four is submission of a grant application for, under the Municipal Aid Grant Program, which provides grants for road reconstruction and paving projects. And that grant would be for improvements to Park Avenue. Similarly, number, Cap Resolution Number Five would be an application under the same grant project for improvements to Bryant Parkway. And finally, the last grant application would be Capital Projects Number Six, which would be funding through the Transit Village Program for improvements to the South Quadrant of the Village Green, including improvements to sidewalks, lighting, and landscaping that area. I ask that we approve all five of these resolutions applying for grants from the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Okay. And we had no comments from members of the public, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, motion carries. Moving on, Councilwoman Little?
Thank you. The next, one, two, three, four, five, six resolutions all involve measures that the council is considering in, to make it easier for businesses during the reopening phase of, under the Governor's Orders. So I just want to preface before I start talking about these resolutions by thanking the members of council who served on the Ad-Hoc Committee for Reopening, including Councilman Naidoo, Council President Fox, City Administrator Michael Rogers, and Mayor Nora Radest. We have spent many, many, many hours discussing the implications of the Governor's Orders, discussing the impacts on Summit businesses, and trying to come up with measures that would make it easier and help our Summit Downtown and our Summit Downtown businesses. This included not only holding several Zoom conversations where we spoke to downtown businesses and asked for input into what measures will be helpful to them, but also a lot of time that we spent looking at what other municipalities had done across the country, looking at how other, how these issues were being handled in other areas, what the impacts were in businesses in those areas, and trying to come up with measures that would work for us here in Summit. So I want to thank all the business owners and residents who have agreed to talk with us and have given us input, and especially all the members of council and the city staff, and the mayor who have worked so hard on coming up with these proposals. So.
Council, not just the downtown, but this?
Yes, all of the city.
Are actually for the whole city.
Yes, I'm sorry if I said the downtown. I meant the, we've been looking at measures that cover the entire city of Summit. And I also want to, it was a point that was brought up earlier, Nancy Adams, who is the Executive Director of our Summit Downtown, has also been very helpful in input, and she's not only been reaching out to the businesses within her district, who is, she's paid to represent, but has also been doing much wider route reach and reaching out to all the businesses in Summit and helping us with that. So I want to thank her as well. So the first of these resolutions is Capital Projects Resolution Number Seven, which is to authorize continuation of the Parklet Program and use of public property. So this resolution continues the Parklet Program that's been in place, which is currently located in front of Tito's and Batavia Cafe, and would allow that program to, to continue and be put in place now that the executive orders have been lifted and allow for outdoor dining. And I ask that we approve this resolution.
Before I second it, which I will, I want to just add my thanks, and I think probably from everyone, to Councilwoman Little for her leadership in this role that she provided to the both the Ad-Hoc Committee, reaching out to businesses, providing information about what different communities have done. She's done a lot of work behind the scenes, and I join her in thanking everyone else, the mayor, council president, the city administrator, the city departments, SDI, Nancy Adams, and the business owners who we've had many communications with. Parking was involved, fire was involved, police was involved, Department of Community Programs, Community Services, everyone, basically, and all the other council members who've given comment, everyone has been involved. And also, if I could, just answer the question about when this decision kind of, I went back in some of my emails, we were talking about this back in the mid-April, about what we could possibly do, and looking at it, even though it was at the height of the COVID epidemic, we're trying to figure out what different options could be if we were possible to open. But of course, we are dependent upon what the governor does and his timing, as far as what we could do. But with that, I want to second Councilwoman Little.
Any, any additional comments from members of council? So I'd like to add, you know, this has been a long process, and, you know, we have had many, many conversations with businesses, with SDI, and a lot of, we've asked a lot of questions of businesses of what would be most useful to them. I've seen a lot of chatter on Facebook, you know, saying, wouldn't it be great if we closed all the streets in Summit? And, you know, that may be some of the resident streams, but when we asked businesses, what we heard from them was, that would make our jobs harder, because we're still at the outdoor dining phase, going to be relying very heavily on takeout, because even if we get expanded outdoor space, it's not enough. So the curbside pickup is, is still going to be their main source of revenue until the restaurants can open more fully. So I, I want to just make sure that, that the public is aware that, that these discussions have been ongoing and should come as no surprise to the businesses, what we're talking about, because we've discussed it with many of them and asked for their input and what they think will be most helpful to them. So with that, are there any other council members with questions? Any, so we had one, one question from, from Allison Chiefo, is that correct? Got to unmute.
Thank you. Okay, yes, Council President, if I may. She writes that towns across our state have been preparing for months for the reopening of restaurants, which include outdoor dining, in anticipation of the previous reopening date of June 1. Businesses need ample time to plan and prepare for additional outdoor seating, including extra tables, outdoor seating, et cetera. How much preparation time did our council give to our downtown business owners? Also, why is, and then she asks a second question about the sidewalk sale.
Okay, so, I, first, businesses are not allowed to open until June 15, not June 1. And I think we've, as we've said, we've been in ongoing conversations with the businesses, and this really should not come as a surprise to them, about the, the measures that have been in place. And we've already had some applications for sidewalk cafes and requests for extensions. We have now formalized this, you know, this evening will be formalizing all the application processes, but these have all been things that the businesses have been aware of. So, Councilwoman Little, did you have more to add?
I just want to also reiterate that, you know, the Governor's Orders just came out last week. So we could think, we, we've been in these talks, and I can't stress enough how many hours that we've spent looking at all the different options and all the different things that we could put in place, and what all the different ramifications are for those measures. But we, until the governor issued his orders, we did not know what the, what those things were going to look like. And we could not respond in a kind of concrete way, or give the businesses and the restaurants in our downtown and throughout the city any guidance, or any specific measures that we could take, until we heard from the governor as to what he was going to allow us to do. Because as you remember, the very first executive order he signed was that the municipalities could not supersede any of his executive orders on COVID, and that we were not allowed to put in place any resolutions or measures that would contradict him. So we had to wait to, for guidance from the governor. As soon as those orders came down, we started meeting, you know, to finalize what resolutions we could put in place, given the orders that we were getting from him. So as soon as, as we could, we put this forward and communicated it to the businesses as well as we could.
Councilmember Naidoo.
Let me just add to, to Councilwoman Little's point, and to address the commentator. One of the key things that we heard from businesses is, depending upon how much the governor would be allowing for capacity, whether it's 25%, 50%, 75%, they would be making different decisions as far as whether or not they would actually be interested in doing any outdoor dining. So if the governor had come and said, you can only do 25% of your capacity, many restaurants would not have really, doing anything would not have made any difference to them, from our point of view, because they told us essentially they would only do a takeout model. And it was on, it really was dependent upon what the governor did. But because, as I said, we had been working for probably now, as Councilwoman Little, Councilwoman, Council President Fox has been saying, for what, more than a month and a half or more, in, in many discussions with many different folks, we had a set of options available to us, and based upon then the governor's order, we were able to take those options that was the most feasible, and that were the most balanced, as far as balancing the needs between different interests. The way I like to describe to people is we, our neighborhood businesses and our downtown are little ecosystems. They function, they functioned really well as the ecosystem that they had built. But now COVID came around and disrupted all of that. But that doesn't mean that we can't take care of all those things that are still necessary. We still have to figure out traffic. We still have to figure out how garbage is picked up. We still have to figure out what different interests they have, and how that still works. And the, the set of resolutions we have tonight are intended to be feasible options that different businesses can choose from, to make themselves more viable, because as Council President Fox started this meeting saying, we want our businesses to succeed.
Mayor? I'm muted.
There you go. I echo and agree with everything that the council members have said. I just want to add one thing that we've all discussed, is that we're doing these, we're hopefully approving these, you're approving these resolutions tonight. But, and we hope they work, right? But we, we've all agreed to be flexible and nimble, and consistently and constantly responsive to the businesses in town, because this is a, this is an evolving reopening. And if businesses tell us, we like this better, or we don't like that, we are, we've all agreed, we're going to be flexible and nimble. And, and that's an important thing that our businesses need to know, that the goal is to bolster their reopening, and we'll do everything we can to make sure that happens.
That's correct. And if there are additional measures that need to be put in place, as, you know, as the reopening continues, and new information comes to, to our attention, we'll be doing that as well. And I believe that Nancy Adams has agreed to help us with publicity to get this information out to the businesses once they're passed. So, so everyone will be able to get started with making their decisions and starting their processes. So any other comments from members of council? All right. So we are now, we, I believe we're talking about the Parklet, is that correct?
Yes.
The current, the current Parklet that, in front of Batavia and Tito's, that's the resolution we're voting on right now.
Right. And we had a, we had a motion and a second, so I think we are ready to vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so on to the next resolution, Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. The next resolution is Capital Projects Resolution Number Eight, which is a resolution of authorizing sidewalk sales. This resolution would enable retail businesses to set up table and merchandise on the sidewalks outside their stores, as long as they maintain sufficient distance on the sidewalk to permit pedestrian traffic and comply with ADA requirements. They, any businesses setting up their merchandise outside also must submit an insurance certificate to the city. I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments from members of council on this topic? I believe there was a, Ms. Chiefo's second comment was on this?
Yes, Madam President. She writes, why is the sidewalk sale resolution for non-essential retail only being discussed at this meeting? Did the governor's order, executive order specifically ban outdoor sidewalk sales?
Yes, it did. It was, I believe it was executive order, was it 110? Matt, do you know?
I believe it was 110.
110, that, that did not allow for sidewalk sales?
That's correct.
Or any other non-essential business?
The only essential, the only essential businesses that were permitted prior to his most recent executive orders were grocery stores, gas stations, car repair, certain construction activities, but you could not have any sidewalk sales whatsoever.
And no non-essential businesses, what you just enumerated was essential. Right, okay. All right, any other comments from members of council? All right, so moving, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects Resolution One is a resolution temporary expanding outdoor dining. And this is to allow any existing restaurant or food establishment to expand outdoor dining for the 2020 calendar year on private property, the public sidewalk in front of the restaurants, or the public sidewalks adjacent to the restaurant with consent of neighboring property owners. This would also require a temporary outdoor restaurant seating application to be obtained prior to the creation, and would permit the service of alcoholic beverages in compliance with the temporary alcohol beverage control licenses. So I would ask that we approve this regulation, the resolution as well.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Bowman?
I do have a quick question on this. And it's about the alcohol that, that Councilwoman Little talked about. How are we handling BYOB if, you know, like Finn or one of those in places would bring alcohol in?
I believe that that is permissible under, because it's regulated by the city. So when they go through their process for outdoor, for outdoor dining, they'll have to submit an application, and I believe that we are able to approve that as well. Is that correct?
That is correct. You, you guys do permit the consumption of, of alcoholic beverages. These are, this is adjacent to their storefront. So if they go through the permitting process, they can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Little?
Just as a point of note, we do reference the temporary ABC regulations, but the ABC is, did pass a new type of license that allows for beverage sales in these kind of expanded outdoor spaces.
And the applicants are obligated to, to receive, to seek and receive that before serving alcohol?
Yes, that's correct.
On an ex, I think it is being granted on an expedited basis.
It is.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Council President, that's, just to be clear, that only those who are current liquor license holders may apply for that extension of premises.
That's correct.
Clarification. Okay. And this is one of the reasons it took us a little while to get this resolution done, because we needed guidance from the ABC and the Governor's Office on how they were going to be handling extensions and liquor licenses. So any other comments from members of council? Madam Clerk?
Through you, Council President, if I may, just also. If I may, just, uh, also offer that anyone who has questions from the community about applying should start with the city clerk's office. We'll be able to, um, help them through that process.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So, um, so hearing no more comments, let, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution carries, and I think we're on to parks and fields.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects Resolution Number Ten authorizes the temporary use of public parks and fields by local exercise and fitness businesses. Um, and this allows for the use of our local parks and fields. Um, each business would be required to submit an insurance certificate and schedule, um, the use of the facilities through the Department of Community Programs. I ask that we approve this resolution as well.
Second.
Any comments, uh, council member Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. Um, as, as Councilwoman Little just mentioned, the, the way that this will actually be implemented is mostly through the Department of Community Programs. So the rules set forth by that department must be followed closely to prevent miscommunications or frustrations. Uh, Director of the DCP, Mark, uh, has been thinking about the shape of the, that these rules will take. Um, and I also want to take the opportunity to stress clearly, uh, to any business owners that may be watching or listening throughout the city, that the governor has not yet issued an executive order allowing outdoor exercise in groups to happen yet. So, um, I, I, I think that when he does, there will be a very strict process to follow, uh, within the city to register and book the time requested. So business owners and gyms, uh, members of gyms throughout Summit should just understand that this is not, uh, like a pickup basketball game where you just sort of show up. Um, this is a process that must be followed. Um, and I, and I know that our Department of Community Programs will be proactive in reaching out to those businesses.
And I, uh, Councilmember Vartan raises a good point. I believe it's June 22nd before the governor will allow, um, any fitness uses to happen. So, um, any other comments from members of council? Okay. Uh, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And moving on to, um, Resolution Number Eleven.
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects Resolution Number Eleven is to authorize expansion of the parklet program. Um, and companion with allowing outdoor dining, the council also proposes that we expand the parklet program. Parklets are, um, essentially outdoor seating areas that are created, um, either flush with a curb on a parking area or in an alleyway or public parking lot space that is set aside for use for, um, outdoor dining. Um, currently, we have one that's been in place for several years, um, that we, we just approved again in front of Tito's and Batavia. This is to allow for the consideration of expanding that parklet program to allow other restaurants to use more public spaces to expand their outdoor dining capacity. This, um, resolution goes in conjunction with the expansion of outdoor dining. Any restaurant that would propose, um, using a parklet space would have to file an application, um, in proposed location with, um, the city. Those would be considered and brought back to council for approval. So I ask that we approve this expansion of our parklet program.
Second.
Any comments from members of, of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I think it's just worth mentioning two things. Um, the first is that just because the governor or, or, uh, the federal government or the local government says that something is okay, doesn't mean that then the businesses are going to jump on the opportunity to do that. They have to understand the, the costs and potential benefits of reopening in a way that makes sense for them. And so people shouldn't just expect that because now things are allowed, they, they should expect that's the day their favorite business will reopen. It's obviously a bit more complicated than that. And then just second, uh, speaking for myself, I'm in favor of doing these sorts of things that help facilitate the recovery and revival of our businesses. Um, I also want to make sure that I'm on record saying I want to be very focused on, uh, making sure that some businesses do not benefit by our actions that may ultimately hurt others. Uh, I believe that we can and we should find the balance between the competing interests while recognizing that there may not be a perfect solution. I echo all the others who have said, uh, that we must continue to be flexible in the way that we approach this, and I commend the very, very hard work of all the people who have been involved in this reopen committee. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. And that is actually one of the reasons why we have asked that any of the parklets come back to council for approval, um, to consider exactly that. Because when we take parking spots from, uh, from one area, it affect, it may affect a neighboring business. And by creating a public process such as this, it's an opportunity for any other business who might be affected to, to make their views heard as well. So, um, I think it's a, a very good idea for any business who wants to apply for a parklet to reach out to their neighboring businesses and make sure that what they're proposing is, um, amenable to the neighboring businesses, so it can be done in a, in a quick and expeditious fashion. Councilwoman Little?
I want to echo what you said. Um, you know, we, we recognize that doing this, um, will push the, any establishment of any of these parklets past the June 15th opening day. And we considered, um, many different ways of doing this. And certainly one of them is that council would just, that we could come up with our own parklet areas and block them off and have them ready for businesses to, um, to, you know, expand into. But we felt that that process was not fair. And if, um, you do look at our downtown and throughout our city of Summit, we have restaurants, we have retail stores, we have second story businesses that rely on access. We have, um, different, um, medical offices and different professional offices through our downtown. We have many different competing interests. And we just, we wrestled with this and really, um, discussed this at length. And this was probably the thing, one of the things we spent the most time on, and we felt that this process was the most fair in allowing restaurants to apply for these spaces and come up with a proposal that they would present to us, but that would also let us, um, hear from, evaluate, and, um, listen to the needs of all the other competing businesses that we have in our downtown. So, um, this is what we came up with, and we will promise to the public that we will do this and to the business owners that we will do this quickly and expeditiously and work with them as much as possible. But this was the most fair way to do this and the only way that really makes sense.
Uh, any other comments from members of council? Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're on to the last Capital Projects Resolution. Councilmember Little?
The final Capital Projects Resolution for tonight is Number Twelve, which is to authorize public use of the Bang Street Lot. Um, and this is to, um, close the Bang Street Parking Lot. Um, and, um, the city will set up, um, seating air, tables and chairs and seating in that area for use by the public when, um, taking food from various restaurants in the, in the downtown area. They can come to this area and eat. So we felt like this was a measure that would help a number of, um, businesses in the area, um, and would attract some people to the downtown, um, and be an amenity to both the residents and the neighboring businesses. We did do a lot of outreach, um, to the, to the businesses that are most directly affected. Um, and they were all either in favor or not opposed to this proposal, the ones that we were able to reach. Um, and though we realized this is a trade-off, we think that the benefits will be worth it in order to get us through this period and, um, take advantage of the warm summer months. So I ask that we approve this resolution as well.
Second.
Um, any comments from members of council? Uh, Councilmember Naido?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, through you, I'd like to ask Aaron, uh, we also put out tables and chairs in the promenade, right, Aaron? Would that be, uh, once the governor's order comes into place, June 15th, we'll be planning on putting those out as well?
Correct. Uh, through you, Council President. We do have, uh, I believe it's 40 chairs and 17 tables that are actually scattered throughout, um, predominantly in the promenade. Then we have some that go at the, the Bang Street slash Lyric Park and a few that go by the horse trough. So those are scheduled right now to, uh, be put out on, um, Monday when, uh, the governor lifts, um, on June 15th, um, as well as the other things that we'll put the fountain on and we'll put the horse trough on as well. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'd also like to add, um, to, to thank Rita, um, and Parking Services for her help with, particularly with this one. We did a lot of discussing about parking and parklets, and I didn't say it before with parklets, but we appreciate all the work that you did to help us figure out how to accomplish all of these resolutions. So, um, thank you for, uh, and thank you for giving up the Bang Street Lot for us as well.
Exactly. Second here.
Okay. Any other comments from members of council? Okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. So, um, we're on to community programs and parking services. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on these topics?
Public comments, Madam President.
Okay. So Councilmember O'Sullivan, it's your show.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 7208 to reject the bid and authorize negotiations for the maintenance of our athletic fields for 2020 through 2021. A bid was received in May from True Green, True Green LP of South Klingfield, New Jersey, for the maintenance of our athletic fields. This lone bid was rejected for improper documentation. This was the second bid by True Green. The first time they did for this contract was in March, and they were rejected for improper documentation as well. I believe one was rejected because the paperwork didn't have the raised seal, and the other bid was rejected because of a photocopied signature. Both bids were properly advertised by our DCP, according to New Jersey Local Public Contracts Law. Because there was only one bidder and the bidder was rejected twice, a contract may then be negotiated and awarded upon adoption of a resolution by two-thirds affirmative vote of a governing body. So after two unsuccessful public bids by True Green, our Department of Community Programs Director is requesting authorization to negotiate a contract with True Green for athletic field maintenance for the 2020 and the 2021 seasons with the option for two one-year extensions through the end of 2023. The negotiated contract will be based on the terms, conditions, and specs of the bid documents for athletic field maintenance dated May of 2020. I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second.
Uh, any comments from members of council? Uh, I did have one question. Is this, um, I, I guess this vendor is not someone who, um, specializes in paperwork, but I, I'm wondering what their, um, their performance is at field maintenance, and have we used them before?
I believe we have used True Green, True Green before, and, um, I think we caught this up to COVID complications.
Okay.
Take over. Not being.
We're confident that they can complete.
We're very careful, we're very careful with all our bid documents, that everything is up to snuff. And, um, so these two things were caught and rejected rightly.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments from members of council? Okay. Um, hearing none? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion carries. Um, so we now have two law and labor matters. Um, uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. So Councilmember Bowman, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Council President. Um, as we, the first law and labor, ID Number 7200, uh, is to authorize accrued time payout for the police department employee. Uh, we discussed this here in, in closed session previously, and, uh, this employee has accrued vacation and termination time to which this individual is, uh, entitled to his compensation, uh, upon their retirement. And, uh, we wish this individual an enjoyable retirement. I move this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? All right. Um, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion carries. Um, law and labor number two, Councilmember Bowman?
Yes. ID Number 7212, uh, to extend sick leave with pay. And also, we discussed this in closed session, as all personnel we do. Um, this individual is a DCS employee who is recovering from surgery, and he will be back at work post, we hope, uh, because we're paying him, uh, sick leave with pay through July 2nd. Um, hopefully he will be back soon to, to be back on the job. Sure he's chomping at the bit, um, using your saying, Danny. Um, here's hoping through the quick recovery. I move this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. So, uh, with that, we are moving on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from members of the public on the consent agenda?
We do not, Madam President.
Okay. Do any members of council have anything that they want to discuss separately, or can we take it as a whole? All right. Seeing no response, um, do I have a motion, uh, for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Second.
Okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on, we've got council members' comments and new business. Does anyone have anything that they would like to say at this point? Uh, Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I would just like to lift up, uh, in regards to the public library. Um, it may have come to many that, uh, the governor has not issued a, um, an order authorizing the public library to open up. And so all of the libraries, uh, administrators have been getting together. There's been a good deal of advocacy to, uh, let the governor know that, and our, uh, officials know that they stand ready, uh, to open and, um, have curbside pickup ready. So, uh, just wanted to let you know that they are still offering lots of online services, um, but they're anxious to get back into operations and, um, in, in a gradual and safe manner. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Um, Councilmember Naido?
Thank you very much, Council President. Uh, I just wanted to make a comment, which was that, uh, at the first of the marches that we had this week, at the end of that march, uh, the last speaker was a young man who, uh, asked the crowd that what they could do, or, or told the crowd what they could do, uh, you know, following the march. And he said they needed to vote. And this was something I think you, as Council President, also referred to. Uh, I'd like to remind the public that we do have a primary coming up in July, uh, and that folks should be expecting to get, because it's going to be, uh, mail-in ballots that are going to be sent out to everyone, folks should be expecting to receive in their mailboxes, mail-in ballots. So if you're already registered as a Democrat or a Republican, because those are the primaries, you will get an automatic mail-in ballot for your party that you're registered. But if you're an independent, my understanding is you will get an application that you can submit, uh, from the state to get, to register for, for, uh, the party that you want and, and then get the ballot thereafter. My understanding is also that if you are not registered to vote, you can go to our City Hall and register to vote. It is critical for everyone to exercise their right to vote if they can vote, because this is how a democracy functions. If you want government to be responsive, participate. Thank you.
I'd like to add on to, uh, Councilmember Naido's comment. The deadline for registering to vote, I believe, is June 16th. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
A little time. You can also get a form online and print it out. So there are lots of opportunities to do this. And my understanding also is if you are not affiliated at this point, you can send in your vote-by-mail application, and they will send you both a Democratic and Republican ballot. And you then choose, which you only fill out one and send it back in. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Um, I think that you have to send in your application for the, uh, ballot. Then they will send you, depending on what you declare at that time, then you will be sent the correct ballot. I don't believe they send both. I'm, I'm, I have not heard that.
It's interesting. That's what the Union County website does say.
Is that right? Okay. Okay, I stand corrected then, I was not aware of that.
Application to indicate your party affiliation. It's a rather odd situation.
Yeah, the application probably, but we'll see. We should also mention, if I may, Council President, that while all registered voters will be receiving vote-by-mail ballots, we will have some select locations for in-person voting. We have designated, the county designated the community center for Ward One. It will be split between two, the two gyms, and then we have Ward Two split between Washington School and the high school. If you do go, if you do go to in-person voting, you will only be voting provisionally by paper ballot. Only those people who have disabilities will be using the machine.
And will there be also drop boxes, Madam Clerk?
There will be designated drop boxes. I, I volunteered Summit to be one of the locations, however, while it's not 100% confirmed yet, we have not been selected as one of the drop box locations. The closest might be the Union County Annex in Westfield.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to ask the clerk to please repeat those locations again.
Yes.
I want to make sure we've got Ward One and Ward Two properly identified.
Yeah. So Ward One will be at the community center.
So they're doing it opposite, the how it's.
You know, I'm always, I'm dyslexic with this, so thank you for correcting me, I don't have it in front of me. Ward Two will be at the community center, and split evenly between the two gyms. Ward One will be split between Washington School and the high school. Am I correct here, Councilman Naidoo?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments from members of council?
Also, may I just add one more thing? We do have voter registration forms in the entranceway of City Hall. The people can come by and help themselves to it and drop it in a box designated for election forms right there, and we will be checking daily, perhaps multiple times a day, to see if there's any forms in there, and the county will make arrangements to pick them up the next day for us. June 16th is the deadline.
And where, what are the hours of the lobby right now?
I believe, and the chief can confirm, I believe the lobby area where the forms are is open 24 hours, seven days a week.
That's correct, Madam Clerk.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, any other comments from members of council? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion?
Council President, we received one public comment. It came late. It's up to you whether or not you want to take it. It has nothing to do with any of the items on the agenda.
Okay, well, you know, this is an unusual day, let's take it.
Okay. This comes from Steven Spur on Woodland Avenue. He says that June 14th is recognized across the nation as Flag Day. Flag Day commemorates the adoption of the flag of the United States on June 14, 1777 by resolution of the Second Continental Congress. On August 3rd, 1949, National Flag Day was established by an act of Congress. Does Summit have any plans to celebrate Flag Day this year?
I am not aware of any, but if anyone else knows, hop in.
I can tell you that, Council President, we have not received any requests for use of any public property for any commemoration.
Okay.
Council President, can I just ask a question? Have we ever celebrated Flag Day? I'm not aware of that.
Not that I'm aware of, I don't think it's one that we generally.
We've had flag retirements on the Village Green.
Yes.
But I can't recall us having a Flag Day celebration.
Thank you.
If there's an interest in planning such a, an event, probably for next year at this point, I don't see any issue doing it, but I think there is nothing planned coming up next week. All right, so with that, do I have a motion to return?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.